Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. Let the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Counselor Fishbein has advised me that he is on his way here, and I do anticipate, Counselor Testa. Item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A and C through KK.
That's moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Counselor Zandries, no vote is noted. Item four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer. Mr. Gross.
Good evening, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair to the mayor or to the controller. And we're coming up on a year anniversary of the last year's storm. Did the town go for any FEMA money?
Yes, we do. We did.
Okay. And do you know about how much?
Uh, I don't remember how much of the expenses that we applied towards partial or potential reimbursement, but um, we are, we think, and please, this can change, just for the record, we're hoping that we receive between us and, and the electric division primarily eight hundred thousand dollars.
And my question is then, where's that applied? If, if the town gets, say, X, hundred thousand, not the electric division, that's different, that's a separate entity, where does that money go?
That would just, it would be received and recorded and into a, just a non-budgeted revenue account.
So it goes into that extra fund?
Federal, federal grant, federal grant revenue line item.
That's correct. And how is it spent then? Is it going to?
It was spent, it was spent two, a couple fiscal years ago, so it wouldn't be spent.
I understand. So, but it's replacing money that we spent on public works?
Yes, public works primarily in public safety.
So what I'm saying is, does it help offset the budget?
No.
All right. That's, that was the question.
No, because for a couple reasons. Number one, we, we don't know the amount, and number two, sometimes the amount changes significantly from what we think we might get, so.
You will know the amount eventually, because you will get an amount of money.
Hopefully.
Yeah, it could be, I mean, it could be zero, what I was gonna say, it could be zero to your eight hundred thousand, whatever it is in between. And if the town, the government side of the town gets two hundred thousand, why wouldn't that be applied for future to help offset any taxes? Because that's money that we spent in the past.
It could.
But have we done that in the past?
By its nature, if, let's say if the town, if everything came true according to budget, that would be our surplus that fiscal year. And as you know, we've used surplus funds to help budget or offset tax increases and provide services in the, in the future budget. So that's probably what it's gonna be doing.
I was just wondering, because you could, I mean, that's revenue coming in. I know it's belated, but it does come in eventually, so it should be to offset something. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Parmley, Bristol Street of Wallingford. Um, I had a two-part comment on different subjects. One, I wanted to thank Mr. Laterno last meeting for coming down and speaking to me. I know he did not have to come to the floor and do that. And I really appreciate his honor and his ability to come down and talk, knowing that there was an upset group of people. Um, we have discussed some things, and I appreciate some parts. And on other parts, especially when it comes to people voting on the Board of Education funds, I do ask that there's a little more education of the difference between why children in SED might have a disciplinary problem versus what, what is a true disciplinary problem and why our schools need to hold it no matter what. We need to make a safe environment for all of our children. And that is where a little bit where we still disagree. So I'm just asking, even if you go to a school and please sit down and ask a guidance counselor, a school psychologist, bend their ear for five to 10 minutes and just understand why those differences are there. And even if they're there, why we need to address all students. Also, going back to the last meeting, I wanted to ask the comptroller if he had a number of residents at Ashler Village, an average per year to year?
I don't have an average assessment.
Okay.
Units at Ashler Village.
So you don't know how many taxpayers are excluded from paying into our educational system?
No.
Okay. What percentage do they?
They don't, they, uh, look, if you don't mind if I can take a step back. The assessment of the total parcel is what it's based upon, not each individual unit. So I don't know how many units are even there.
On the parcel, could you please define?
It's, it's, it's the whole assessment for the whole campus.
Okay, interesting. And what percentage do they get taken off? Like, what is a percentage? Like, they pay what taxes, percent in taxes and what?
They don't, they don't, they don't pay taxes to us. The organization pays the taxes. Ashler pays the taxes.
Okay, and Ashler is the one who gets the discount off of the education?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question.
Sorry, shorten it.
That's okay. The HEVAC unit also goes on it, and I only have 20% hearing in my left ear, so.
Understood. So what percent of taxes comes off of Ashler Village? What discount do they get?
What, Ashler Village pays a pilot based upon the formula of the school budget versus the general government budget. So it's approximately 40%.
Forty percent. That's, that's steep. Okay, so in, in Ashler Village, the average monthly rent for people who need semi-assisted living is three thousand, three hundred dollars per month to sixty-nine hundred dollars per month. And then for those who do not need assisted living, anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars a month to four thousand a month in rounded numbers. Those seem to be some of our most well-off citizens, while people who are living paycheck to paycheck don't have that kind of privilege. I sure can't afford to pay that much for my mortgage on the lowest number. So when we talk about capital projects going and being discounted away for education all over for Ashler Village, I, I ask you to keep that in mind. Now, we have elderly who are barely making rent or having to live with their children, who could be self-sufficient otherwise than money. We're taxing them, but we're not taxing some of the most well-off citizens. Um, and I just, it just kind of really blows my mind as we sit here and talk about a 40% tax deduction as 60, they say 40, let's call it 50. Okay, so for 60%, they get off of their taxes. To me, that's unconscionable. And as we sit here and talk about our children and their needs, while we're putting building costs on their back, if you compare other towns, those building costs are not there in education. Other towns truly say the price of education. And I think we really need to say, when other towns do it better, do it cheaper, that we need to keep that in mind.
I, I will. Uh, but it's not my function. I'm not elected, so you're, but you are talking to the right folks. You're talking to the nine of them up there. If I may add to your, to your comments, something that you may not know.
Okay.
Wallingford does something that most of other communities do not do. We pay for several huge portions of school costs out of the general government budget. The first of those being the pension contributions towards non-certified personnel of the schools.
Okay.
That would be paras, everybody other than certified teachers and administrators. So over a million dollars a year. That's in our budget. No town that I know of does that. The second thing that we pay for the general government budget on behalf of schools is the property casualty liability and umbrella coverage. I'll call it general insurance for their buildings and liability insurance. That's paid for, that's paid for out of, that's, and that's, that's about six hundred thousand dollars a year. The third large portion of expenditures that we pay out of the general government is for crossing guards. Now, that's a mixed bag. Yeah, the crossing guards are paid for out of the police department budget.
Yes.
And that's a mixed bag. Some municipalities pay for that, you know, out of their police budgets, and some pay for it out of their school budgets. That's about 200, and I'm gonna say close to probably about a quarter of a million dollars a year. So.
Still be.
When you're saying that, I, I just want you to be careful, or, or anyone to be careful when they're speaking to say, you know, what does the general government do for schools?
That was my comment. That was what Ashler Village puts into schools.
Okay. Well, I, I just wanted you to, to know that, you know, we don't abandon the schools.
Uh, I don't believe I said that whatsoever. So within that, if we put across capital projects into the town budget so that goes across all taxpayers, it's not even all going straight to Ashler Village. We're still raising what we need for taxes, plus what they would put in for it. And it just really doesn't make sense to me. I cannot wrap my head around 60% of tax discount when our poorest citizens get nada. And the people who can't put a decent dinner on the table every day get nada. So this is something I really think needs to be brought up. And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you seem to be smirking or laughing. Is there something you'd like to say?
I'm surprised, I'm surprised at your mischaracterization of the expression on my face. You said laughing or smirking?
I do apologize. I just wanted to give you that credibility.
Well, I, I do think that's rather unkind comment, given what I'm sitting here doing. But let me say this, what's being ignored is the legal background of this. At the time Ashler Village was being built, the town assessed the property, and the Masonic Foundation believed it to be not taxable at all, because it's a nonprofit. It resulted in Masonic taking it to court. They appealed the tax assessment, and in the course of that lawsuit, it was settled. And the town settled it on the basis of what we're discussing, the education portion of the budget they would not pay taxes on. The reason for that settlement was that we had a fair chance of not getting anything if it was found to be all tax exempt. So we arrived at a settlement that had money being paid to the town representing the services in general that they would receive direct benefit from, police, fire, et cetera. But that's the background of it. It was a settlement of a, of a lawsuit, and the belief that there was a very good chance that they would pay no taxes at all. And this all goes back to state law, and what state law finds to be taxable and what is non-taxable. So this wasn't a private deal. This wasn't any, anything other than a difference of opinion over the application of what is taxable property and what is not. And it was settled, and the town was able to collect something rather than potentially nothing. So we can argue about now whether it's right, wrong, or indifference, but the backdrop of it is that they, they, Masonic certainly had a legal right to appeal the tax assessment. And we certainly were acting in the interest of the town to preserve some tax payment rather than risk receiving nothing.
I do appreciate that back history. It's just, I still can't, as a taxpayer who's struggling to stay here and who has to leave at any cost right now, but this is just absolutely astounding as we still fight over this. And thank you for listening, and I really hope all accounts from our SED to our disciplinary that comes into SED, to why we need to push some of these things back into the general budget, are really all taken a hardcore look at. Because everybody was saying, yeah, we can't down per year the educational costs. You guys can't give us less than we got last year. But what we could do in that aspect is to say how much we would get in surplus, say we're gonna keep that status quo for the next couple of years, and say that we're just gonna take that back. And let's really take a good cost of what it takes for books, for teachers, for the true educational part, and take those capital gains out of there. Thank you.
Paul Chardillo, Two Bayberry Drive. About a month ago, the public hearing, there was a gentleman that raised three issues with regards to the cemetery association. One of them had to do with the budget, or the lack of a budget. The other had to do with transparency around that budget. And the third issue, which is my question, it's actually for the mayor, a question was raised about the, the building construction that was recently built over there. And I, I think that, if I recall correctly, you indicated you were gonna look into it and provide some feedback. And I'm just curious as to whether you've done that, and have you come to any kind of conclusion? What do you see there?
I went down to the building, observed it myself. It's cosmetic. At first, I thought could be vandalism, but it's a cosmetic condition of some of the panels.
Yeah.
The, Mr. Beaumont and Mr. Gross, or at least Mr. Beaumont, indicated to me that on behalf of the Cemetery Association, they were going to look into it. They were gonna talk to an architect. I haven't gotten a report from them. But that's where it's, it is.
Yeah, just by way of feedback, I took a drive-by recently, and my impression was that it's not vandalism either. It was, has something to do with, with the construction of it. There's, the potholes or pockholes, or however you wanna describe them, were symmetrical on three of the walls that I could see. So to my untrained eye, it does look like some kind of a construction issue. What that is, who knows? Thanks.
Mr. Heine?
Thank you. James Heine, 342 South Elm. I just have two, two issues. One, I was here a few weeks back, and I had made a suggestion that the backup materials for these meetings be placed online as opposed to signing up for an email from the town clerk's office, which I have since done, and I'm, I have the backups here. But I was just wondering, does anybody know if any, anything's happened with that? If there's been any follow-up? If there's been any discussion about putting the backup materials for these meetings online as opposed to signing up for, for an email on a email list?
I initiated some discussion. I have to follow up.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Sure.
The second thing that I, I did want to bring up was that there was, as I'm sure you all know, there was a resolution of the CMAC litigation, and there was a number of articles in the local paper regarding that. And the town certainly is going to recover more money than it spent, so that's a good thing. But one of the things that I think, I hope you all read the arbitrator's decisions. One of the things that he pointed out was that the town could have actually, actually received a lot more money had it brought its claim earlier. And because it had not, there was a lot of money, possibly millions of dollars, that it lost out on. And that was because, according to the arbitrator, that either the town just simply delayed, or the town didn't understand the terms of the agreement until it actually had a lawyer take a look at it and review it, and at that point realized that the town was being overcharged. That, I think, should be very concerning to every one of you. The, the articles in the paper made it seem like the town won, and the town did, had a great outcome. But if you actually read the decision, the arbitrator points out that the town delayed in, in making its claim and lost out on a significant amount of money. When, just a couple years ago, they had the, one of the issues that came up during the charter review process was whether the PUC should be expanded from three members to five members. Now, I understand that at least two of the members that are currently on the PUC were not on the PUC when this litigation began. So I, this is not a comment on any of the existing or current members. But in my opinion, that was a, that was a missed opportunity. That was a missed opportunity. That PUC should have been expanded from three to five. And this is a perfect example as to why. So I, I thank you.
Ms. Cosentino, your name and address for the record, please.
Anne Cosentino, 17 South Whittlesey Avenue. I just want to speak on behalf of special education. I will disclose that I am a para in the system, working with special ed children, but I am not here as a para. I am here as a parent. I have a senior in high school. He will graduate in less than 20 days. God help me. And I couldn't, I couldn't convince him to come up, to come with me. I wanted to show you what a success story he is. If it wasn't for the special ed department. And he has been in this program since birth of three. He went to Cook Hill, Moses Y., Rock Hill, Dag, and Leimann Hall. He has had every service under the book, including home tutoring because of surgery, which inserted a steel bar into his chest to keep him alive. This child was not supposed to walk. This child was not supposed to talk. Still can't say is ours, but that's no fault of any speech therapist. We've had speech therapy. We've OT. We've had social workers. We've had special ed director, teachers. We've had everybody. And under my knowledge and what I've learned over the 15 years that I've dealt with Wallingford School District is that as long as there's been a give and take, I know my child, they knew what they were doing. I've had flips and, you know, things that you wanna butt heads on, but not everything. But if it wasn't for that, he would not be going off to Johnson and Wales in the fall. But also, on the outside, what you give the kids here is educationally necessary. What I did for my child, that was also medically necessary, emotionally necessary, and everything. He had six years of once-a-week counseling at CBH, which is Connecticut Behavioral Health in Cheshire. Six years, almost once a week. I was very lucky that my insurance copay kept on going up every year, but even if it didn't, I would find a way. We were up at, when he was at Cook Hill, and I would go, and he would be in the afternoon, I would be driving to CCMC, and he would get OT, PT, an additional speech that was medically necessary, not educationally necessary, but medically necessary. Drive back and drop him off. Slice a pizza in the car and go. We still can't go to CCMC without getting pizza. But this child has run track. His child went to a coach at Leimann Hall and said, I wanna play lacrosse. He could never play contact sport because he had a steel bar in his chest. And he played for the past three, two, three months, something like that. I went to senior like, senior night last night, cried buckets. This is a child that told, they told me that may not even walk, live, not do anything. If it wasn't for special ed, and the services over there, they've increased, they've decreased. I cannot see taking away the chance for the kids that I teach now, and I will bring that in, to have that same success. For a parent to stand up in front of you 12 years down the road and say, thank you. It's important. I mean, yes, it's growing. Yes, it's hard. But times are different. Diagnosis, ways of diagnosing are different. I mean, kids that I went to school with teen years ago probably could have used special ed, but they survived. But you, you make your way, but you go through. And maybe things would be different. But things push on. And us parents, and one thing I've noticed with special ed, and I've been involved with PTAC, special ed PTAC, involved in everything, in Moses Y. almost every day. When he was at Cook Hill, he had Mrs. Hosmer. She taught him sign language so he can communicate. He couldn't communicate. Couldn't understand that he just wanted a cookie. You know, it's those little things. And yet now, he took the initiative. He contacted Johnson and Wales once they came to school. He's going for a major that I can't even put together, because they put two together. Now I have no idea what he's going for. I just have to pay for it. But those are the things that special ed gave to me. Gave to him. Gave to, gave him confidence. Gave him the security to do so. Gave him the speech. Gave him the, the physical therapy. Gave him the ability to walk. He's running. He ran across that field last like, like nothing, because things were behind. Those are the things that we have to look at for the future. And like somebody else said, go talk to the guidance counselor, go take care. Go into first grade class. See the kids who have trouble with just their typical ABC and learning. Go see what I see. Go take a look, and friends, and just spend a day in an elementary school. And you'll, you'll see maybe why there is such a need for services for all children. Thank you.
Thank you. We've exceeded our typical time limit for public comment. I am, I'm going to close the public question and answer period. Onto item six, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on an, on an ordinance, and I will read the short title shortly. "I hereby convene the public hearing for the $1,808,104 appropriation and bond authorization for the 2019-2020 capital improvement program. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?"
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. I will read the short title. "An ordinance appropriating $1,808,104 for the planning, acquisition, and construction of various municipal capital improvements 2019-2020, and authorizing the issue of $1,808,104 of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose." Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Just, I know I have it straight, but we're just...
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, just, I know I have it straight, but we're just, have this paper, but we in actuality are not going to be bonding this. We get the money from the electric division, correct?
Mr. Bose.
Well, sitting here tonight, I say our, our plan is not to bond it. Of course, now this, this allows us to legally do if something should happen.
And has something happened in all the years that you bonded this? Or tried to bond this?
Well, right, right now, as far as it comes to this fund, we've been, we've been fortunate, but you never know when we're going to have to take advantage of that.
I understand. It's just an expense to do it this way. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
To answer that, at one time in the past, at least one time, we, we did sell bonds on Cap and Non, right? So it's, it's not like it never happened.
Mr. Chardello.
Paul Chardello, Two Bayberry Drive. Now, if we approve this bond purchase, and if the bonds are not utilized, I guess you used them once in whatever it was, in here, how long it was, 20 years, 15 years. Do these bonds, does this authorization expire? Let's say in six months or a year?
I don't think so, Mr. Bose.
The authorization to spend for the projects that are on the list that you probably saw during the various hearings of the budget, those will stay open. The charter references a three-year period. If there's no activity in those within three years, then they shall be dealt with as though they have been closed out. But that doesn't really happen very often. Matter of fact, I can't really remember it happening except for in one instance in 14, 15 years here. As far as the bond lapsing, the authorization, there's various state and federal laws which, which, which affect that. If something is authorized today, 10 years, could we all bond for it? I'm going to probably say no with our bond councils here, but, but there's no, you know, deadline expiration, six months or a year or something like that. But if there, if there's funding and cash to pay for the projects, the bonds would, would not be sold.
Right. I guess that's my, that's a concern that I have. You know, this happens every year, obviously. And every year, my position has been, and still is, that I think we're double dipping here. Because the projects that are called out in the budget theoretically are being funded by the transfer of $2 million from the electric division. So that's, these projects, they're already funded in the budget. So there is no need for bonds. And I, I understand the argument, not the argument, but the point of view is that, well, we, you know, we might need them. I don't think that argument is, has any credibility at all because there's, there's plenty of money in the budget, certainly in the surplus. I believe what happens, well, I'm not really sure about this, but we've approved these bonds every year. So you get $2 million one year, $2 million the next year, $2 million the third year. And you really don't know what the disposition of those bonds are. Do you? Does, does the town come back and say to the council that these bonds that you authorized, we just, we just exercise them?
There's certainly records, and we can certainly ask. It's, it's not, it's not something that's kept a secret.
Well, I, I guess it is a secret. I don't know. How many of these bonds have we authorized in the last 10 years? Sounds like $20, $20 million approximately. What's the status of those, those bonds?
I suspect the majority of them haven't been issued.
Is that true?
That's correct.
So you got $20 million worth of authorized bonds on the books that are unexecuted?
They're not sold. We don't go to the market and sell bonds for, for these projects in quite some time now.
Yeah, okay. I think this is a fruitless exercise, and I don't think it's necessary. And I ask that, I guess my recommendation would be to vote no.
The ordinance authorizes the issue of the bond for this budget year.
Right.
So once the budget year goes by, and if, if there's no bonding done pursuant to the ordinance, then it lapses.
That's, is that what Mr. Bose just said? I thought you said something different.
No, that's not entirely accurate.
Okay. Well, I apologize if I misconstrued what you said, but, but there, this bond issue is limited to certain projects. Mayor.
That's correct. Very narrow, it's a very narrow scope.
That's the key. It's for specific projects. Once those projects are completed, the authorization is over. You can't use it at some future time if you've completed that project. And I think Attorney Fazey will...
That's correct. You can't spend double dollars on one project. So once the project is completed, once the expenditure has been made, you can't issue bonds to finance them.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's not legal to do it.
I missed what you just said. Could you repeat that?
If the electric funds or some other funds are used for the projects identified in the bond ordinance, then you can't use the bond ordinance to pay for them.
So these bonds that are being approved tonight could not be used for something else? Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. I tell you, I would love to see some kind of a system because, I don't know about the rest of you, but I, I think the capital project process is, is very confusing in terms of how many, how many projects are out there and what is the status of them. You have to go tracing through all these, these books, and it would be a pretty simple matter to establish a system so that we could understand that better.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I have a follow-up then. I, maybe I'm wrong, but in past years, in section one, it normally listed the roads that were being paved. This year's, and I maybe I didn't pay attention the past, past couple of years because this just goes through. And this goes to the attorney's comment. All these items on here is blanket. This is not one item. This is townwide sidewalk installation. Townwide guardrail replacement. Townwide paving. So that could, is there a cap? I mean, what does that? Normally you have X number of roads, say seven roads. You have in Public Works normally has X number of roads that they're going to pave. It's $1.8 million, and you're done. Here, it also says emergency management building and parking lot. I mean, all these, was that the building that was just knocked down? Is that all in this or what? So what I'm saying is, yeah, this could be more than $1.8 million. And normally you do specify.
The emergency management building is, is referring to the, I believe, the once Yalesville Fire Station building. And they utilize that now. The projects, there are, there are road projects, there's other projects in there such as emergency management. I mean, that's what the money has to be used for. Whether, whether it is through borrowing, through bond, or through the cash we have, those are the projects, and no other projects can be handled.
I understand that, Mayor. That's, that's clear. But to the attorney's point, if you bond the one, bond $1.8 million, yes, you can spend that, can't spend more than that on this. But you don't have a list here. It's townwide, it says, paving. So you can go over the $1.8. So can you take some money from your cash and bond it? Is that possible? Attorney's moving.
The limit is $1.8 million.
A bonding.
The reference is what's in the capital improvement plan. So whatever is identified in the capital improvement plan is what are the projects that can be undertaken. And for those projects, this is the amount, $1,808, that can be expended on them. If you expend the $1,808 on those projects, and you want to spend more money, then you have to come back and get another appropriation. But you're not going to bond it through this bond ordinance.
The additional.
That, that's right.
But if you had cash that's sitting there, you need to come back from the council.
This is authorizing $1.8 million. That's it.
So they...
Cash, borrowing, whatever. It's $1.8 million.
So once they hit the...
If we needed more money for other projects, or one of, one of these projects cost more than what we expected, we'd have to amend this ordinance or seek another appropriation of another kind.
But what projects are they? That's the, that's the follow-up. There's nothing listed here. It's just town, it just says townwide. Normally you've listed that you're going to pave Parker Farms Road, you're going to pave Cook Hill Road, you're going to pave Seneca Drive.
Public Works has a list of those roads.
But why aren't they listed here? Because this is the ordinance.
There's no need for them to be in here. If, if for some other reason, a road had to be changed from one to another, this, this allows that to happen based upon need. But they do have a list of roads.
Thank you.
Mr. Hein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. James Hein, South Elm Street. I, I just have a more basic question, which is, I, I remember reading in an article a few months back that our credit rating had gone down. And one of the, the things that they looked at was the amount of bonding. I seem to recall reading that in the article. And I guess my question is, is that, what effect does the bonding, even if we don't use it, even if the, the bonds are never issued, does that affect our credit rating? I mean, because I know on a credit card, you know, they look at how much credit you have, open credit you have, even if you don't use it. And so that, that's sort of my, does bonding work the same way? Does it have the same effect on, on the town's credit rating?
Yeah. The, the rating agencies do ask us those questions, but in a nutshell, if there's extra, extra credit out there that we're not using, does that harm us? Is that your question, if I may?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because I know on a credit card, they look at how much open credit you have, even if you don't use it.
It's an excellent question. The answer, just briefly, is no. It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't see any other hands, and therefore I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion and a second that the proposed ordinance appropriating $1,808,104 for the 2019-2020 capital improvement program and bond authorization be adopted? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Laughlin, seconded by Shortell. And I bring it back to the council for discussion. Mr. Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bose, just, just for my own edification here, because I, I voted on these before, and I'm pretty sure I understood the way they worked, and I just kind of want to make sure that I'm still following the way that it works. So all this is, is an ordinance so that we could borrow for this work if we need to borrow for this work. It's, it is designed, it is designed to be for the things that are outlined here. Now, if we don't do, whether we borrow or we don't, let's say we, we get all of them done, but say Grand Street Park, which is in here, and it goes and it gets deferred to next year. This is still a valid ordinance to bond if we wanted to do Grand Street Park next year.
Yes.
And it might even be into the third year, but at that point, it pretty much goes away. We'd have to come back.
That's correct.
So it's, it allows us the opportunity to borrow if we need to for these specific projects. And if they all get done with cash or through some other means, the, the fact that the ordinance exists, we cannot borrow it because everything is complete.
Correct.
So, okay. And that's, that's the way I've kind of understood it, but with the conversation, I wanted to make sure I was still following. So we, we may not borrow this money at all. We may end up using capital funds that we've got on the side, the electric division money. We may be using something else entirely.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Fishman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to take off on the exchange with the public. My understanding, because I think in the past, we did have a list of the roads. So let's just say that northwest, east, and south streets are on the list. And $1.8 million and change is going to go into this account from the electric division. So we have cash, right, Mr. Bose?
That's correct.
Okay. And we utilize that cash to pay for the roads that are on the list that we anticipate right now.
That's correct.
With this, and, and, you know, the mayor says, you know, well, I want to do these other 10 roads. Wouldn't this bond authorization authorize that to occur?
Well, we'd have to come back to you folks to revise it at that time. And if we increased, let's say, whatever number you want to throw out there, let's say a million dollars of more roads, we'd have to increase the, the authorization to do so with a revised ordinance. And then frankly, at that time, make a decision, or as the projects are going on, whether or not we bond that portion or not.
Well, under my scenario, however, in order to do the roads, you hadn't used the bond authorization. You've used the caps that the electric division has given and put into the Cap and Non recurring account. So the amount of bonds that's issued under this authorization at that point is zero.
Correct.
You have the authority, however, to write $1.8 million in bonds. So why would you have to come back to the council when, you know, it doesn't say townwide paving project in accordance with the list that's in the Cap and Non recurring budget or something like that? It just says townwide paving program. If we're to understand that it's just specifically the, the roads, and that's all that we're authorizing, the roads that are in the budget?
Correct. I mean, assuming they can get to them all, and, and the pricing comes in, that we cannot exceed the $1.8 million. If they have a list of, let's say, seven or eight, seven roads, let's say, that they wish to accomplish with that, and the bid pricing comes in too high, they might have to not, not utilize or not do one road and put that in next year's Cap and Non recurring is what they could do.
Well, I don't even see how that's conceptually feasible because essentially, once the electric division makes their payment to the, the pilot payment, you have the authority for, was that 2.16? No, it's three, 3.6 million. You have the $1.8 in the cash, and you have authority for $1.8. So that's 3.6. So essentially that you could expand.
Now, the, the $1.8 million, well, I see Joe getting up, so he's going to correct me if I'm wrong, I hope, but Attorney Fazey, I should say. But that would be, we would still have, we would have to come back and revise it because the, the legal authority to spend is limited to $1.8 million. Joe, am I...
Okay, through either vehicle.
Correct.
Okay, so you could not combine the two.
To my, to my belief, sitting here, probably not.
$1.8.
Yeah, $1.8.
$1.8. That's it. You can't spend $1.8 twice.
So the authority is not, the, the word escapes me. I don't, they're separate and apart, they're distinct. It says the, the sum of $1.8 is appropriated for... Okay. So am I to read section one to say the most you can spend on these projects is $1.8? And then section two says, if you need to, you can go get bonds?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
As shall be necessary. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you. I, thank you very much. How many years? Okay. No, I, that clears up a lot. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Zandry.
Yeah, so, Mr. Bose, so I, I just want to make sure that I understand the administrative ability to affect any changes in here. So when it says townwide paving program, just as an example, I'll pick on that one. And we know there's a list of 12 roads that are included on this year's townwide paving program, which is the intent of this bond issue. If we do all 12 of those roads, we can't swap a road in or out without coming back to the council? Is that true?
Yeah, I, I believe that's accurate.
I, I don't think that's true. $1.8 million can be utilized if, if there's, if sufficient, if all the funds aren't spent, and there's an additional road that could be handled, that could be, that could be done.
That's true.
Without coming back.
But we can't spend more than $1.8 million.
All right. All right, so if we spend 1.8 million in cash, fix the, let's say there's 12 roads on the program.
Let's keep in in mind, the 1.8 million covers more than just the roads. It's about 1.1 million on the roads, and there's additional, the park and a few other things.
Okay, so.
So the 1.1 million, some of it's dependent upon the condition of the road. So if engineering and public works sees something else that needs to be done, then that would be prioritized with this.
Okay, so I I'm what I'm trying to follow, so I'll use 1.1 since it was your example. The the bond, the bonding amount is for 1.8. 1.1 is dedicated for the road. So if the 12 roads cost 1.1 and we spend cash and we want to do a 13th road, are we able to pull these bonds and and do a 13th and a 14th road because we didn't utilize it?
Not if it goes over the amount of money that's authorized, the 1.8 million.
But the the bond is authorizing one thing, cash is authorizing something.
No, no, it's not. It's not a separate authorization. 1.8 million can be spent for the avowed purposes. That's it. Whether it's cash or whether it's bonds, it's only 1.8 million dollars.
In any form?
Right, it doesn't double up.
That's that's.
Or where I was getting. It doesn't go up by 25%. It's 1.8 million, period.
Okay, got it. So so this is the work as as outlined, whether we do cash or bonding or a hybrid, it cannot go over that. Perfect. That's that's better for me. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone. Morganstein.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni.
Yes, motion passes. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Fozzie. Onto item seven, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider an act on the following ordinance entitled Amendment to Chapter 62 Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the Town of Wallingford. The text of the ordinance is to extend the outdoor dining provision of that ordinance to include Wallace Avenue. It's basically what we're doing here. Are there any questions or comments on the ordinance? Going once, going, oh, Mr. Heim. Yes, I've opened the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I guess the only question I have on this is whether by passing this ordinance, this allows the activity or whether they still have to go, you know, to planning and zoning or or to the the usual process.
So the the site's approved by planning and zoning already? And all that has to happen is they have to make sure that their outdoor dining complies with our regulation? Because there is some some things you have to do in the regulation.
Yeah, and so that that was my my question. I mean, I I assume that just by passing this, they they still have to comply. And if they have to go to planning and zoning for a site plan approval or something like that.
No, that's different. Their their site is approved. It's.
With the patio?
It's not. It's not a patio.
Oh, I thought that I I thought that was the purpose was that it was going to be outdoor dining.
It's to allow sidewalk dining, just like you have on Center Street, not North Main Street.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Certainly. Anyone else? There being none, I close the public hearing. Any comments from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm glad that the the new place has opened up. But it was my understanding that they were not, didn't have food. Am I wrong? It was alcohol and you could bring food?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not sidewalk dining, it's sidewalk drinking, I I guess, right? When we talk about the outdoor dining ordinance?
Well, yeah, I I guess if you're being particular.
Okay, well, because like Half Moon, which somebody shouted out, I mean, I think they don't, I don't think they sell alcohol. I think you can bring alcohol there.
And that's correct, and this is the inverse of that.
Yeah, no, I know. So the the other, and I've, I haven't totally, you know, examined the site, but I know we had this issue. So like J Christians can't do this because they don't have two entryways. I think under the alcohol code, and that's the reason why Archie Moores can do it, because they they have two entryways, they can cordon one off. How is it foreseen that it would happen with this establishment?
He does have separate separate access to the outdoor area.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I'm I'm in favor of it. I just, you know, I the expansion. I guess the other concern is there's been some complaints that this was allowed in the lower Center Street area in the back parking lot and that it was noisy. We had all concerned about that. I guess it's not, there's not residential as close at this site, so I don't think that would really be a concern.
I I'm I'm not aware of the lower Center Street.
No, go ahead.
I I was not aware that was going on, and I can't, can anybody here speak to that?
They were, they were approved a while ago. And the other thing is procedure. So this ordinarily, an ordinance goes to the ordinance committee?
It did on Thursday night.
Okay, and then, so the expedited procedure for that, and that's how it gets here. Okay, let's all head. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else on the council? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Fishbein.
Yes.
Laughlin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Shortell.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni.
Yes, the ordinance passes. Onto item eight, which are the several motions that will be made for the adoption of the fiscal year 2019-2020 annual budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the total general fund revenue budget of 169,187,078 dollars for the change made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019.
Moved seconded by Counselor Shortell. Is there any discussion? Nothing from the public. I bring it back to the council. Any discussion in the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Mr. Chairman, just a concern in that, you know, this budget is based upon reliance upon certain funding coming from the state, and we really have no idea where we're going to be. So, you know, I I know the legislature did give towns like ours, where in this situation, when there's uncertainty, to put off voting on the budget. You know, was it two years ago, it was proposed that we got cut by 20 million dollars? And, you know, certainly we're not in that boat, but I don't know what the future brings at this point. Conversely, we may end up getting more money than we anticipated, as is what happened last year. So I don't, I I don't feel totally comfortable, you know. If we got cut by 15 million dollars, let's say, I I think somebody would have to take a serious look at some of the spending that's going on in this budget and, you know, perhaps roll it back. But I just want to make my concerns known. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Mr. Fishbein's comments, I certainly understand the the issue that you identify, but in the, there really isn't any precedent for us to get cut by such an extreme amount. I know the threat was there last year, but we, there was a lot of threats and a lot of crazy things that came out of the Malloy administration that didn't come to fruition. The other thing is if you vote no on this budget, it's a no, it's a it's a vote for, a raise for the council members, and it's a vote against the extension of the of the pool season. So just to note those facts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laughlin.
Yeah, and I agree with everything Counselor Marone said, and I appreciate Counselor Fishbein's concern. But I think we could revisit, as we did last year. We ended up getting more money than we expected, so we came back and we met in a couple or at least one special meeting and readjusted the the tax rate after that. But this at least gives all of our departments the ability to move forward and start executing for for next year. On what I think is a is a pretty good feel for what may end up happening.
Counselor Fishbein.
Just to prevent the the box in that's attempted here. And just for the record, I'm opposed to the raise that was proposed by others for the council, and I'm in support of the the pool. So those particular votes are not before us tonight. My vote will be about the entire, the budget in its entirety. So I attempt to duck the box. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good job. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead. I don't need to. Someone's ready to speak.
I just, I just for the, I want to kind of emphasize that because it's been brought up here a number of times. And as many times as we've mentioned it, it doesn't seem like the message entirely gets out to everybody at home. The change in the rate of pay for the council members that was discussed earlier and now has been changed is not for the people that are sitting up here today. It is for whoever is elected come November. I I just like to make that clear because that that's one of the big issues that we we always seem to have, whether it's local government or state government, oh, they're voting themselves a raise. The the change that was originally proposed was after about 10 years of not seeing any rate change for the position with some consideration to do exactly that for the next set of people elected. And I just want to say that again, just for additional emphasis. And it's it's kind of moot because we utilized the fact that those funds were played in to apply them to to the community pool effort. But again, I just, I like to be able just to kind of push that one more time. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I I appreciate your characterization of my raise to the council. Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I just, and obviously, I recommend approval of the budget. But I think we're all aware, the budget does not include money for the teacher pension payment. So could that become a a real expenditure, a cost issue for us? It could, but there's no way of knowing what will happen, and that's about, it's close to $400,000. So we are, we are making judgments about what we think we can expect and whatnot, but we're not trying to fool anyone.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Cervoni. So I I guess I just feel the need to say, well, I'm in favor of keeping the pool open three more weeks and not raising people's taxes. You can't have it both ways. Doing a budget is about making decisions. So we had a lengthy discussion and a four to four vote about the way we are managing Board of Ed money, where that money comes from. There was a lively discussion at the Board of Ed meeting the other night about actually taking that idea and moving forward to see how it could all work. Every year, to say I just vote no on a budget so that I don't raise taxes for people is not really working through a budget. So I I thought about voting no on this budget because I wanted to make my stand on the Board of Ed funding of maintenance and repairs. But I see good decisions having been made by my fellow counselors and Counselor Shortell's creative use of funds in order to keep the pool open for three more weeks as a good budget decision. This body spent a lot of hours working on this budget a little bit different from the mayor's budget and voting yes for that rather than allowing it to revert to the mayor's budget as opposed to simply saying no. I can't vote for any budget that has a raise. It's kind of a thankless job in some ways, but a job we've all done. So, thank you.
Counselor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to pick up on Counselor Zandry, he covered it pretty well. But the council raise can only be done in an election year. So that's why the discussion was was now, because it is an election year. Next year, it can't be. So it's basically every other year. So I just wanted to clarify that for just some parliamentary procedure here. Thank you.
Counselor Shortell.
I just want to echo Counselor Zandry's remarks about the specifics of the raise. We didn't ask for it. You put it in, Vinnie. It wasn't going to be for us anyway. Anyone out there wants to run for town council, contact your local Democrat or Republican Party Chair. It's so much fun. You can spend your Tuesday nights here. There's time. Just contact them. And thank you, Counselor Morganstein, for your kind words as well. I I'm I'm voting yes on this. Nobody wants to raise taxes. I think this is a good budget, though. We do our best, like Counselor Morganstein said, to work through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zandry.
Yeah, I just, I I also wanted to follow up quickly about community pool because that that question has come up to me a couple of times as well. And a couple of the strong, the strong comments I got against the idea of it is, well, if they if they want to pull open longer hours, why don't they just pay for it? I I kind of, because they, the these questions came out as if taxes were going up because of that, and I want to make sure that's crystal clear as well. The mill rate and and the rate at which you're going to be taxed when this budget passes would have exactly been the same if it were not for the juggling, because a number of things happened. The money that was already in the budget, a couple of lines got shifted around. And the additional point is that a third of that cost is being shifted directly into the cost of the pool tags. The change in the cost of the pool tags, which is about $5 a tag, is going to offset a a third of the cost. The other two thirds were line juggles that do not change the taxes whatsoever. So one way or the other, this is the rate by which the taxes would have changed in town. And and I think it was a very good effort to push that through. But for those people that were concerned, it's falling on their backs. It's not. And when and the questions come in, why don't they pay for it if they want to use it longer hours? They are. The tags are going up also. So you want to make the argument it's subsidized. That's a different argument. But the point is that the the amount in taxes that you're going to get hit with is exactly the same. So I just wanted to bring that up, too. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on this first motion on the budget?
Fishbein?
No.
Laughlin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve, we move to, I move, we adopt the total general fund expenditure budget of 169,187,078 dollars for the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019.
Moved seconded by Counselor Shortell. Discussion on this motion. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Longview Road, just a quick question. It's probably a comment because you're not going to answer it. The, or not have the, I didn't mean to say it that way, but you're not going to have the answer. In today's Record Journal, they talked about Southington, and they talked about their education budget. And I don't know if this is apples to apples. There are 98.8 million dollars in the school budget. Wallingford is 1.3 and change. And the, I don't, the students are a little more in Southington than Wallingford. The only non-denominator that I can find, and this is for future, is they have one high school. So in the future, if the town's so concerned about the taxes and so forth, I know there's been a lot of talk, but this is where you're going to get your money. You don't want to cut teachers. You don't want to cut, and I'm not saying to cut any programs. But the difference is the high schools and Southington's, and I understand they're economically a little higher up on the scale than Wallingford, but they do very well in a large high school. They're in the 30 top percent in the state and so forth. We're not. So these are things that hopefully the council and the Board of Ed will really look at and not be swayed by rivalries between two schools. Thank you.
Mr. Chardillo.
All Chardillo, Two Bayberry Drive. Yeah, I just wanna express my feelings on the budget again, and in particular, the tax increase. I don't support a tax increase, and my reasons are simply that if you look at the, the history of our budget process, we, I've made this point many times, and I'll make it again, we, our expense budget is inflated, and our income budget is, is underestimated. If you look at this last fiscal year, we ended the year, this is June eighteenth, yeah, June of, of twenty eighteen, we ended the year with expenses under budget by about two point four million, and our revenue, by the way, the, this budget book is incorrect. If you look at the revenue column for twenty eighteen ending, it shows a hundred and fifty-four million. We actually did a hundred and fifty-eight million plus, and I'm, I'm basing that on the, the audit report. So, we, we gave back five point six million, and I, I think this is probably the first time we ever used, maybe this is the second time, that we used some of the fund balance that's been allocated. We allocate the fund balance, and then we give it back at the end of the year. So, I believe that, again, that the expense budget's inflated. If you look at this year, first nine months, we are underspent by about twelve million dollars through nine months of the fiscal year, and we've only got three months left. So, my prediction is that we're going to come in under budget again on the expense size, probably on the revenue side, too. But basically, my recommendation is to cancel the tax increase, and I, I personally don't think there's anything in the charter that says you have to identify within the budget where to make the cut. I think you should allow the mayor to do that, because he's in the best position to make the cuts, if, if you're gonna cut them. But if you're looking for places to cut, you can take the, uh, the two million dollars that we transfer to the non-recurring fund and disallow that, because, again, all we're doing there is we're paying cash for things that we could be bonding, that drives our, our taxes up. There's another account in here, the contingency account. We almost never use anything out of the contingency, and in twenty, twenty eighteen, we didn't use anything. And so far this year's, I, I don't think we've used anything, and yet, we're budgeting seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the upcoming year. So, you could probably cut a half million out of that. So, there's a lot of money in there that, if we worked hard at it, we could find, and, you know, we could certainly get through this year without a tax increase. Thanks.
Comments on the council? Counselor Fishbein.
So, Mr. Chairman, you know, we, the town of Wallingford is very fortunate in that we have the electric division, and not only for the electric rates, but also because of the money that we get for the cap and non-recurring account. I mean, I, I talk to people from different towns almost every day, and, and they are so jealous of us, because we know every year, we get about two million dollars that generally can only be used for capital projects. So, other towns, they have to, like, raise taxes or something like that, identify a project, have to actually go to the people and convince them that this is a viable project so that we can raise your taxes to get there. And, you know, if we look at the, the work that we've done over the last, well, since, since I've been here, in the last ten years, with that money, I, I just have to say that we're very fortunate. So, you know, I would not be in support of, you know, canceling or transferring that money, certainly, you know, roads and sidewalks and bridges and that kinda stuff, very important for the safety of our residents, for the transportation within our town, for economic development, all of that stuff. So, I just, you know, given the comments that were made, I just thought that it was appropriate to, to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can honestly say that I agree with you, so thank you. Counselors Zandry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just in case anybody up here, or the folks here, want, want the numbers, I'll, I'll just read the last two years. So, in budget year sixteen seventeen, we had, we had allocated four point two million dollars from the fund balance to use if we needed it, and we, that was actually the first year in one, two, three, four, five, six years that we actually used some of it, we used one fo, one point four. So, we didn't use the entire four point two allocated, but we did leverage one point four of it. So, the, the, the general fund balance did go down. In seventeen eighteen, we allocated seven point two million for use, and we used one point six. So, the general fund balance dropped by one point six. So, past couple of years, we actually did use it, and I, I've, and I will, I will kind of take this opportunity as well to say that prior to that, I had been pushed, I always pushed back very hard up here, because I felt like we were, we were raising taxes, allocating those funds and not using them. I, I don't wanna use them either, I don't wanna burn savings either, that means we're missing too far on the other side of hitting that very tiny moving target. So, you know, one point four million dollars isn't tiny per se, but against the overall budget, it technically is. So, I've been a pretty big advocate of trying to narrow that down. The fact that we tipped over onto the other side makes me believe that we're, our position is a little bit more precarious, because we actually are burning savings, we are technically spending more than we are bringing in, and so that is also the other side of the caution. So, I, I appreciate the sentiment that we, we need to try to get as close to zero as possible, I wanna remind everybody that's a moving target, but when, when I see that we're not overburdening the taxpayers, I, I, I find myself in a lot more ability to support the budget, which is why I am gonna continue to vote yes on this, so thank you.
Anywhere else on the council? Not Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we establish the property tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, at twenty-nine point one nine mils. Real estate and personal property taxes in excess of one hundred dollars shall be made in two installments, the first of which is due July first, two thousand and nineteen, payable on or before August first, two thousand and nineteen. The second installment shall be due January first, two thousand and twenty, payable on or before February first, two thousand and twenty. Real estate and personal property taxes of one hundred dollars or less shall be paid in one installment due July first, two thousand and nineteen, and payable on or before August first, two thousand and nineteen, as provided by Connecticut Statute, Chapter two oh four, Section twelve dash one hundred and forty-four. Motor vehicle taxes shall be made in one installment due July first, twenty, two thousand and nineteen, and payable on or before August first, two thousand and nineteen, as provided by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter two oh four, Section twelve dash one hundred and forty-four A. Delinquent motor vehicle taxes shall be paid only in cash or by certified check or money order, as provided by Connecticut General Statute, Chapter two oh four, Section twelve dash one hundred and forty-six. Property taxes in an amount of less than five dollars shall be waived. Checks in payment of property taxes which have been returned by the bank shall be subject to a thirty dollar fee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes, motion passes.
I move, we adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, as stated in this budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded, did you get the second?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, discussion. Please call the roll.
Fishbein? Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes.
I move, we adopt the budget of the Capital and Non-Recurring Expenditures Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and four dollar revenues, and one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and four dollars in expenditures.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes, unanimously passes.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask, who seconded the pre, prior motion, was that Mr. Testa?
No, that would've been, uh...
For the, oh, this one was Mr. Letourneau, the one with the utilities?
That would've been Shortell.
That was Mr. Shortell, I'm sorry, I thought I heard Mr. Testa's waist in there, thank you.
I move, we approve the special funds of the Board of Education of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, as attached hereto and made part hereof this budget.
Second.
Seconded by Letourneau this time.
Thank you. Special.
Discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes, motion passes.
I move, we approve the special funds of the Town of Wallingford General Government for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, as attached hereto and made a part hereof this budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Please call the roll.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes, motion passes.
I move, we approve the Capital Appropriations and Force Reserve Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of two million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in revenues, and two million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars in expenditures. This represents the amount as of April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, which may decrease as expenditures occur through, through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. This amount may also increase if the current council approves any unspent Board of Education funds to be carried forward in the one percent fund for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, these are projects that have been previously appropriated, that have not been completed and/or started, that we're carrying over into the next fiscal year.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, just wanna be clear what we were voting on. Okay, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes, motion passes.
And finally, I move, we authorize the chairman to sign three copies of the finalized budget, two to be filed with the town clerk, and one to be placed on file in the Wallingford Public Library.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Please call the roll.
Fishbein?
Yes, um, sure, yeah.
Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
I abstain. Motion passes. There being, oh, we do have one item for, item nine?
I move, we go into executive session pursuant to Section one dash two hundred and sixty of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Call the meeting back to order as there are motion to come out of executive session.
I move, we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session.
We adjourn. Second.
He moved, we adjourn, and I say that's an appropriate motion.
All the love tonight.
So, there's a motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You can stay.
Don't need a motion to adjourn.